I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for September 26, 2023. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Barba?
Here.
Blackmayr?
Here.
Bona?
Here.
Harpen?
Here.
Obasahan? Alesskowitz?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Shade?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Eight present, we have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silent remembrances and we would like to remember at this time, Elizabeth Rolston, she worked at Graylock School and was an election worker. Edward Noel was a longtime teacher in the North Adams Public Schools. Steve Green served on the Community Development Advisory Board and served the city in many other roles, including as part of the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition, had a huge impact on our community. James Floriani, who worked at Jury High School, and Michelle Briggs, mother of our own city councillor Pete Alesskowitz. And the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have approval of the minutes of September 12th, the council minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And a motion to approve the special meeting, September 12th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Minutes of the September 11th, 2023, joint meeting of the Planning Board and the North Adams City Council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you for getting all those done and that time. Hearing of visitors on agenda items, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items on the agenda. Please give your name and address for them, clerk, and also you have two minutes. Who wishes to approach? I think we've got mics on two sides now, so that should be helpful. And you can approach the mic and, yep, go ahead. Yep, you raise your hand.
Robert Cardamino, 173, Schwenzy Street. I would like to address 12-314. And that is to, a petition from the National Grid to set a public hearing for the installation of new poles and replacement of another pole on Montana Street. If they come before council, I hope this time you will hold their feet to the fire and enforce the ordinance that I read here. The last time they let, you voted for and you violated your own ordinance. And I don't think it should happen again. They're supposed to notify Tim Lascarbo and have him inspected the sites and pay $70, $75. And when they're finished, they're supposed to call him again and he can go back and check and make sure they've done a good job, and that's $50. And I don't think they still have filed a bond, which they're supposed to, for $50,000, oh, $100,000 and $300,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Next? And then we will move on to the agenda. Sorry, there's just lots of papers here. Here we go. Council Paper 6,150-2, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 2, Article 19, Airport Commission, Section 2-108, entitled Establishment, Composition, Qualifications of the Revised Ordinances to Mirror Mass General Law, Part 1, Title 14, Chapter 90, Section 51E, Passed to a Second Reading and Published as Required by Law at the September 12, 2023 meeting. We need to move, postpone this to the next meeting because the ad was not placed.
The ad was placed, it was just a few days short.
It was short, I meant, I was going to say the ad wasn't placed in time to meet that deadline. So do we have a motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone to the next meeting?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Council Paper 9,513-31, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 7, Section 7-11 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Regarding Change of Permit Price, Passed to a Second Reading and Published as Required by Law, Was Voted to Do So, The Vote Will Need to Be Postponed Again.
Motion to postpone? To the next meeting?
Second.
Discussion? Councillor Wilkinson?
Why are we postponing all this?
Because they missed the deadline by three days, by a couple of days. The turnaround time. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Council Paper 11,790-3, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 3 Building Code, Section 3-50.3 Taxes, Fees, and Penalties to Establish Registration and Inspection Fee for Short-Term Rental, Postponed from the Meeting of September 12th with a Return Date of September 26. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
A motion to pass to a second reading and published by law?
As required by law, thank you. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Councillor Alesskowitz. Discussion, Councillor Wilkinson, did you want to give us an update?
In your packet, you found the fee schedule. I wanted everybody, of course, to have a chance to actually see that and have any comments at this meeting if they so wanted to. I thought if we did it at last meeting, it would be rushing it through. So if there's no comments, then we will move it to a second reading, published by law, and bring it back at the next meeting.
Councillor Harpen?
Yeah, at the last meeting, I had requested a report basically stating what it costs to do an inspection for short-term rentals or long-term rentals or even a hotel. So basically, just some understanding of what in general basic cost would be to do an inspection on a short-term rental, a long-term rental. Is that available?
Kathy's going to get a copy, but we'll be happy to share it with everyone so you have it in preparation for your next vote. Is that okay?
If, yeah, that's up to the council's pleasure, yeah.
Are there any other questions, comments, while we wait for Ms. Ead to get those for us? Councillor Barba?
Yeah, if I could, thank you. At the last meeting, we also did talk about the cost, and I believe that Councillor Wilkinson shared that, the reason for the high cost. Part of that was, per Mr. Moranti's discussion during your general government meeting, was that they had to create documents and they had to input all of this information, and that was why part of this cost was going to be suggested, I believe, $250. But I do have a question, once we get that information, regarding the annual registration of vacant and foreclosed residential properties. That's already a required document that's listed on our city's website. It asks pretty much for the same information, so maybe we could cut down some of the costs because it's already there, asks for a registration number, pays a fee, asks who the officers or who the agent in charge is. It's actually right listed on the city's website with the ordinance attached to it. And it's only $15 per year in order to register your vacant or foreclosed property. So I'm finding it hard to, again, understand how, just the registration process, regardless of the inspection, could be such a high fee. There is a substantial fine if you don't register your foreclosed or vacant property, which starts at $250 per year and goes up to $350. But it seems to me that we maybe, the registration process could be a bit simpler and maybe less costly if they're going to get whacked down the side of the inspection.
I also want to bring up something. Years ago, when we started this conversation, when Airbnb and their other type organizations started, like this was 2013, there was a conversation, Mr. Moranti said that if all of these apartments/houses were to be part of this, keeping up with just those inspections would really be unattainable with the staff he had at the time. So that's also, I mean, if we end up having as many as we think we may have eventually, we're going to need more staff. So it's, it might take X number of hours, but if we have to bring on a part-time person, then we have to pay them and we have to have their benefits, et cetera, et cetera. So that's always a concept, is whatever somebody makes a dollar per hour, add a third on for benefits. Mayor, would you like to answer the questions of Councillor Harpen and Councillor Barba?
This is an analysis, and I'll share this spreadsheet with everyone. Mr. Cardamino, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. And it takes the stages of Mr. Moranti's time as well as the inspection done, if our health inspector does it. And it talks about processing application fees, reviewing the application, scheduling the appointment, completing the inspection form, travel to the site, call to advise, inspection, et cetera. And it ranges anywhere from $300 up to $426 under Mr. Moranti's inspection fees or salary fees. And then the second part is anywhere between $242 and $337, depending on Heather's time. So I think the fees that you're asking are kind of in the ballpark, but I'll be happy to share this with all of you so you can examine.
Councillor Harpen?
Is that for long-term rentals and short-term rentals, or is that specifically, is there a difference? What's the difference between long-term and short-term? Yeah, I think this is for, they looked at it for the short-term, it's basically the same inspection. Okay. So I can give you actually a copy. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the long-term rentals is $40, $45? Around that, yes, $40, $45. And this is going to be between $200 and $350, whether or not you actually live on the property? So the variance is pretty wide for doing the same inspection, right? So if we're going through the fees anyways, that Councillor Bona just gave us, I don't know if we're bumping up the long-term inspections, but I think the two of them should be comparable. And I will share this with everyone, so you have.
Thank you. Anyone else? And anyone commenting on the fee, do they have any amended? Councillor Harpen?
I didn't get a chance to go through the fees from Councillor Bona, because it was just put on my desk like five minutes ago.
But we're not, we're talking about.
I know, but I would like to, through the chair, to Councillor Bona, do you know if that figure has been bumped up, or is it still at $40? Any general knowledge on that?
Okay, answer?
Yes, please.
So at that point, this particular fee is not in that package, because, one, we haven't actually passed it yet. And as for the long-term housing, I don't recall us increasing that, you know. Now, I guess my, my argument of why they should be different is a long-term rental is clearly for residents, and you can bump up the fee, but that's just going to get passed on to the residents. While short-term fees are more, even though the property isn't commercial, it is treating it like it's a commercial property. You're renting it out like you would rent a hotel. And, yeah, you're not paying commercial taxes, so you don't have to do short-term housing. You have, you can easily do long-term housing, and the reason why people chose that is because they make a lot more money off of short-term housing. So if they, you know, someone can rent out a short-term apartment and make 10, 20 times more than they can a short-term or a long-term one. So the, having a fee that's only five times more doesn't, doesn't seem out of whack. And again, we did look at other communities and what they're charging, and I think also people, it is going to be a concern down the road of what we're, you know, we may be discussing other things when it comes to short-term housing, because, for example, there are communities that are limiting short-term rentals or not even allowing them at all, but they're not for long-term rentals, because long-term rentals are your residence. And, you know, the more short-term rentals we have, the less residents have the places to live. So I don't think they are apples to apples by any means. And, you know, people furnish and treat these short terms, again, like little getaway experiences, and I just think they're different. And, you know, the fees, I mean, I guess you could say, by the way the mayor just expressed what the cost would be, it is a benefit to the residents that are living here that we're only charging the $40 for long-term when it's actually costing the city more, and at least we're making that up on the, on the, on the short term. But as for your initial question, I do not believe, trying to think what that would have fallen under, but I don't believe it was adjusted. I mean, it can be. I don't, while you have this in front of you tonight, I don't plan on having us vote on it. We'll get to that in a minute, but I just wanted to get it in your hands.
Okay, thank you. I also want to clarify something. I mean, we just had, we just had fresh grass, and there was, there were a lot of people making negative posts about tourists, but here we are, we're bringing them in, they're spending their money in some people's B&amp;Bs, helping families maybe have some extra money if they're just, if they're running out of room. So, and people say, well, does it bring any revenue? Well, this is some offset revenue for the other issues that come up when you have a lot of influx of people. Councillor Harpen, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to let, you know, I am going to vote no on this. I think that the two costs, the inspections, are similar. The mayor actually said they're the same thing. So, you know, I think that we should be basing our fees on, on what it costs our community to conduct an inspection and not based on how much money people are making on it. We have business licenses that are similar, and there's a specific fixed cost for a business license. It's not based on, you know, what your revenue stream is. So I am going to vote no on this.
Councillor Shade?
We've been talking about this for a long time.
Two years.
And we've done a lot of research on this. I know I've looked at what other communities are doing, and with these new numbers, a $200 fee and a $350 fee, we're much closer in line with the actual cost of an inspection. We're not here, and we weren't tasked in this ordinance or in this process to look at long-term fees. We need to, they should be adjusted, because clearly $40 doesn't come close enough to covering the true cost of an inspection. But that's not what we're debating or we're working on with this piece. We are working specifically on fees for short-term rentals. So we should stick with that. The fees are very close in line to what it's costing to do an inspection. If anything, they're actually on the lower side. And so it's important that, yes, I do agree, our fees need to be in line with how much it costs, because we need to pay for services that are being provided for that inspection. If they cover it, great. But the fees aren't arbitrary. There's been so many arguments about the numbers coming out of nowhere, about these being arbitrary. These fees help cover those costs of how much it costs for somebody to go out. And sometimes the inspector has to go out multiple times, because something's not right, they got to leave, they got to come back. So if anything, are we not charging because every time they go out? Should we be? It's good to have a set rate, and I think that's included in those numbers as well as the fact that sometimes you have to go back. It's, it's an average, it's an estimate. But that's the whole reason why we have a set fee and a set schedule. I'm going to, again, be very much in support of this, and I do agree, we need to look at the long-term rate and potentially change that as well to be closer in line with our inspection services fees. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councillor Harpen and Councillor Barba were opposed, the other six were in favor. Council Paper 11,826, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Regarding Various Fees Established in the City Code, Postponed from the Meeting of September 12th with a Return Date of September 26. Councillor Bona, what is your pleasure?
So I'd like to postpone this for two more meetings, and I would like to, tonight, I did hand out the councillors' the draft proposal for the Schedule of Fees, Appendix D, also along with the proposed, what the ordinance, actually, the amendments to the ordinance, maybe. Now, there's a couple of things that may not be in that Schedule of Fees, for example, the fee that we just discussed of long-term or short-term housing.
Excuse me, could you just make a motion to postpone?
Oh, sorry. Make a motion to postpone and forward, I'd like to forward it to the mayor's office and back to the Finance Committee and come back in a month.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, now you can go.
Sorry, yes. So in front of us is the proposed ordinance changes and the Schedule of Fees. I knew tonight, there was not going to be enough time anyway, but I really want this to go back to the mayor's office. I'd like for the administrative officer to also look over them to make sure that the way the ordinance is written is, looks correct, but also to double-check, it's, I mean, it's been doubled and tripled, but I think now that we actually have it in this format, to just look at the fees one more time. And then adding the short-term housing fee and then updating, I did update some, but I want to confirm, I know we're discussing and voting in tonight, the transfer station fees, and they are in here also, but, again, those might need to be updated and corrected and aligned with what we're approving tonight. So, anyway, so that's my reasoning for postponing.
Thank you. Anyone?
One more thing, and I don't know, through the chair, to the mayor. Do you feel that having yourself and Ms. Ead look at this is good enough, or should it go to the solicitor?
I think we should take a first look at it, as well as the Finance Committee and make any edits, and then when we're done with that, then send it off to the solicitor.
Okay, because it's a lot of changes, so, okay, thank you.
Is this going to meet the eight-page bulletin that we don't have to spend a chunk of change?
This is double.
Let's add a few more fees if we can.
This is double-sided, so.
Okay, definitely, thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Papers.
Actually, one last thing on that, can you, and if any councillors, if you look over that and you have any suggestions, please forward them to the city clerk, and then she can forward them to the Finance Committee.
Council Paper 12,191, Communication from Councillor Shade Requesting the Local Department of Health Review the Rules and Regulations to Address the Storage of Garbage, Postponed from the Meeting of August 22, 2023, with a Return Date of September 26. So this is, yeah, so it's been referred to public safety and it hasn't been, that really moved forward. Councillor Sapienza or Councillor Shade, do you have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to postpone to the first meeting in November.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Councillor Shade. Discussion, who wants to start? Or do we just want to vote on it?
I have no further at this time, we haven't had a chance to meet on that. We've been trying to finalize the taxi ordinance and public safety, and once we get that out of the way, we will be bringing up the, this issue.
Thank you. And Councillor Shade?
Yes, thank you. This was introduced quite some time ago. It needs to become now a priority, because we are getting into the winter season, we are going to see more of these infestations. So it's really necessary that we actually have a meeting on this with the Department of Public Health before the next meeting and can actually have an update on this, please.
Okay, before the, before the first November meeting, through the chair to the, to Councillor Shade.
Yeah, I would like to see some kind of action or proposal or some kind of update with the Department of Health's input for that meeting. We've been putting this off now for a while, and now we're getting into that time of the year where the infestations are going to get worse.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Council Paper 12,218, Mayor's Communication Number 10, Requesting Review of the Taxi Ordinance by the Public Safety Committee, Postponed from the Meeting of August 22, 2023, with a Return Date of September 26, 2023. Councillor Sapienza, do we have an update?
The update is, is that we have the ordinance back from the solicitor with very minor changes, and the Public Safety Committee needs to finalize and approve to send it to the council. We, all we did is approve to send it to the solicitor. We will be bringing it back to the full council, and I would like to make a motion to postpone that to the first meeting of October.
October 10. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Councillor Harpen? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,273, An Update Communication from Councillor Sapienza on tapping into the audio that feeds the TV broadcast to assist with amplifying the communications in council chambers. Councillor Sapienza, do you have an update?
Yes, I do. You can see the wires we have strung across the room, kind of resembles Thomas Edison's lab, but we've set up a temporary system to do a live test of the audio system. We would appreciate any comments during the open forum at the end of the meeting. If the volume is sufficient, or if it's too loud or not loud enough, let us know, we'd appreciate it. This is only a temporary setup, we're just doing, we're just doing this to test, and so that's all I have on that right now. Thank you.
So without objection, I'll file the communication, and we're kind of done with this, and you'll update us that it has happened?
I will do that, yes.
Thank you. Okay, Councillor Bona?
So, I apologize, so is it working now or not?
It is working now, yes.
So they are, there's noise coming out of them?
Yes, there is, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, good.
It only works if you speak into the microphone directly.
Right, you have to, you have to get close to the microphone. We don't want.
I like there's no delay or anything, so.
No, no, this is, this is a straightforward, just a basic amplifier, and.
Can we get one right here, though, so when the mayor speaks?
Oh, so, it's, so you guys can hear out there?
Yes.
Yes.
Coming through? Mr. Cardamino, can you hear me now?
Perfect.
I have a hard time, there's a book in my way. Okay, so, let's move on to the next paper. Council Paper 12,299, Mayor's Communication Number 81, Requesting Time for Interim Chief Bailey to Give a Presentation Regarding the New Body Cam Policy and Procedures. Without objection, I will move on to the mayor's, the mayor and the chief. Interim chief, whatever.
Thank you. Do you hear me? Okay? All right. All right. So I just wanted to explain a little history of how we got here. Back in October 2022, the North Adams Priest
Back in October 2022, the North Adams Police Department received $94,492 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and the Office of Grants and Research for the Body-Worn Camera Program. The police union wrote a letter of support for the body-worn camera in December of that year, 2022. In May 2023, we rolled out our pilot program with the body cameras, and then in June, everybody wore a body cameras. Since that time, we applied for another grant, which will allow us to buy more body cameras to, to give to our specials, our retired officers who are also working road details. So when that grant kicks in, if we do get the grant, we buy the body cameras, that means every officer in North Adams will have a body-worn camera. So right now, we have 29 body cams, and that furnishes all of our full-time police officers, including myself. They were paid for by the grant, and they have a five-year warranty, and the only thing that the city has to pay for is the $5,079 annually for our subscription fee for the video software. Now, mind you, with body-worn cameras, studies in Rialto, California have shown that wearing body-worn cameras lowers citizen complaints, it also is less likely an officer is going to use force, and that's because of what's called civilizing effect. Pretty much if you go out and you know that you're being watched and monitored, you're going to be on your best behavior as a police officer. It also incumbents people, civilians, to be on their best behavior as well. So with the body-worn cameras, it's been shown that we have, like I said, lower citizen complaints, lower use of force, and it's just a better piece of equipment for police officers in general. So police officers are mostly in favor of it, as are the administrators as well. Since the implementation of body-worn cameras in North Adams, I can say there is two instances that come to mind, that officers were completely exonerated for citizen complaints. It helps us out in the long run as an administrator, because we can review the body camera very quickly, and we can show the citizen who is initiating the complaint what actually happened, and it doesn't lead to an internal investigation, it could just be squashed before it gets that far. So that saves us time, that saves us money having to investigate. Using the body-worn camera, we, it's evidence, it creates evidence that we can use in court, so our officers won't have to testify as much if we have that hard evidence to show the jury. It also saves us money having to go through motions, having to send our officers to court on overtime, and it just saves us time in general to get cases adjudicated faster. So again, like I said, police, our officers and administrators are all for body-worn cameras. We welcome them, and they've been beneficial so far since we've implemented them in June. And just to show you what the body camera is, I have it on my vest today. It's small, it's Motorola V300. You can see it has a little green dot on the top, so that, that way I know that it's working, and then all you got to do is push a button, and it starts recording. So you can imagine that everything that I record, audio and video, I'll be able to use this in my police report later on. So if I want to do a witness statement on scene, I don't have to give out paper and pen for the person to write down what had happened. I don't have to take them back to the station to have them dictate what had happened. I can get everything that happened right on scene, move on to my next case, and then review it later and document accordingly. If I'm doing, let's say, a motor vehicle inventory, I don't have to use paper and pen anymore, I can just narrate as I'm going through the car of what items are inside that car, and that keeps me safer as an officer, because I'm able to look at my surroundings. I'm not stuck writing down on a piece of paper in a car. I know if somebody's going to come up on me, if somebody's going to do something to me. So there's different things that the officers can do with this body-worn camera that we haven't been able to do in the past, and it's, like I said, it's just beneficial to us in the long run, and really helping us out, and at very minimal cost to the city. That $5,000 a year for evidence retention is a small amount, as compared to that $94,000 that we got to actually start this policy, or this program, right?
Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Sapienza, then Counselor Bona?
Yes, just curiosity, how much capacity, how long, or how much audio or video do those usually store?
Well, so I just pushed the button right now, I had it on for about a minute, it only took up maybe 1% of my, of my data. So it holds a lot.
Okay.
And if, and as soon as the officer gets back to the station, they put it right back in the docking station, and it transmits to the cloud and can wipe it clean quickly. So you, you as an officer can go right back to the station, and within minutes, it's uploaded, and you can grab another battery if you need another battery and get right back out on the street.
Right, so it wouldn't need to be, I mean, if it was used the entire shift, say an eight-hour shift, would it have that type of capacity, or?
It would, yeah. I think eight to 12 hours, but, and that's continuously on.
Right.
But you, we're going to see how they work in the winter, you know, obviously with cold weather, it may affect the batteries, but we have backup batteries as well. So again, we're fully using them right now, but we're still working through the kinks as well.
Good, thank you.
Counselor Bona?
Yep. So you mentioned about it, you go back to station, they take it off, they put it on a dock, and it automatically, when you're saying the cloud, is that stored off-site?
Yes, it's stored off-site, but they, they can't, the people that house our data, they don't have access to review it or anything like that. We have the access to review it.
And it pretty much goes in saying probably which officer's got numbers correlating with who was wearing it and times like that, and stores it pretty much for as long as you need it to?
As long as we need it, we have retention rates. I mean, it's no less than 180 days, that's by statute. However, we keep it for a year, as long as there, there's no incident or criminal activity. So if it's just mayor you talking on the street, and I happen to turn it on, I still have to keep it for a year. But if there's criminal activity, then our evidence retention rate kicks in based on whatever the crime may be.
What, was that 180 days, you said?
I, I believe the state wants you to keep it for a minimum of 180 days.
Oh, oh, minimum, okay.
Yeah, but we, we go a little bit more than that. We hold it longer.
And you said it's about a $5,000 software fee?
Correct.
That's, that's all we pay for, and how many did you say we're getting?
We have 29 right now.
Yeah.
But we have a grant out to furnish the other officers that may need it. So the plan is to get a full 30 officer police department, and I believe we have six to eight specials, so we're making sure that everybody that carries a gun is going to have a body camera.
And do the vehicles currently have cameras?
Not yet.
Is that a plan?
No, yeah, I believe so, yeah, yeah, we're going to get grant funded for that, yeah.
All right, great, thank you.
Counselor Shade?
Yes, thank you, through the chair to the chief. Who has access to review, edit, delete the files from the videos?
So there's, there's three different levels. So the officer can review their body camera footage, but not for a use-of-force incident. If we're writing a use-of-force report, we have to do, we have to base it on objective, objectively reasonable standards. So we have to write our report to begin with before we review the camera, and I have access to see whether or not they actually reviewed that body cam footage. So when they send their narrative to court, they can say, this is what I thought happened at the time of the incident. After that, they have the ability to review their own body camera footage, and that's it. Supervisors can review everybody's body camera footage to make sure that they're turning it on properly, they're, they're utilizing it properly, and that there's nothing happening on their shift that, that needs attention. Myself and the lieutenant can actually delete video evidence. So if you accidentally hit the body camera footage and you're talking to your wife, and you realize that you forgot to turn it off, I can delete that information, so that way it's not stored and just taking up evidence room.
Just want to see if anybody else. Okay, Counselor Bona?
Do you have to legally say to people they're being recorded, such as we do here?
Yep, so part of our policy is, as soon as we start the body camera footage, we tell you, you're being, just let you know you're being audio and video recorded. And then the citizen has a right, again, to say, I don't want to be audio and video recorded, but it depends on the place. So if I'm out in public, you can say, I don't want to be audio and video recorded, that's great, but I, I'm going to audio and video record you. If I'm in your house, you can tell me you don't want to be audio and video recorded, and I have to abide by that, unless there's exigent circumstances, right? If something is ongoing, if I, pretty much if the police has a right to be there, I can keep it on, but if the homeowner doesn't want you there, doesn't want the camera on, they can tell you.
So if you go into a house and you see there's drug paraphernalia, you can keep it on?
That's my crime scene, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Thank you, chief, for coming in.
Thank you.
And updating us. Sorry you had to come back. Council Paper 12,307, Mayor's Communication Number 87, Requesting Time to Present a Proclamation in Support of Suicide Prevention Month. Without objection, I'll file the communication. Mayor?
Thank you. We'd like to declare September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention Month, whereas suicide is a national public health challenge that causes immeasurable pain among individuals, families, and communities across the country, and whereas many factors contribute to suicide, including multiple crises, relationship problems, physical health problems, problematic substance abuse, job or financial problems, and the loss of housing. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States, second for people ages 10 to 14 and 25 to 34, and on average, 132 Americans die by suicide death each month, accounting for close to $50,000 suicide deaths in 2022. Whereas this is a time that we dedicate to bringing visibility to the role everyone in the community can play in preventing suicide, and to encourage all community members to know signs, find the words, and reach out to someone they are concerned about. And whereas conversations about depression and suicide are central to preventing further suicides and ending the stigma attached to this topic. Whereas September is nationally recognized in the United States as National Suicide Prevention Month to raise awareness of the stigmatism, an often taboo topic, as well as promote resources available to us in our community. I therefore, Jennifer A. Maxey, Mayor of the City of North Adams, do proclaim September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention Month in the City of North Adams. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Council Paper 12,308, Mayor's Communication Number 88, Requesting Authorization for an Order for the City of North Adams to Purchase Two Parcels of Land in Support of the Development of the Blackington Mill and the Bike Path. Without objection, I will file the motion. Mayor?
Great, thank you for this. Attached is an order authorizing me to purchase two parcels of land in support of the development of the Blackington Mill and the Bike Path. We are joined tonight by our friends from the Blackington Mill and the tourist, Ben, Eric, and Nina, hi Nina, who will give a short presentation after I speak about this very important topic. It is envisioned that this assemblage of additional property will promote the development of the long-waited bike trail, as well as connect parcels between the Blackington Mill and the current tourist resorts, allowing the development of the mill, which the city and the Blackington Mill LLC are working diligently to accomplish. This acquisition will allow us to apply for our next round of Brownsfield grants and assess and remediate these parcels. This is key, not only for the Blackington development, but also for our future bike path. We are currently engaged with a professional to help us evaluate the site, as well as document the environmental condition of the land. In order for us to move forward with our grant application, as well as Blackington's next step in the development, we need permission to purchase these two parcels. We can't go forward with the grant funding, we, Ben can't go forward with his needs on the Blackington Mill until we take on these properties. Most of these properties, these properties do run along a proposed bike path, but this important thing is connecting. It's a piece of land, two pieces of land that have been out there for years. There are a lot of Brownsfield money available to us, and the time is now for us to apply, but we can't apply until we acquire the land. There is some additional research that we have to do, but we feel confident at the end, the same result will be that we will acquire these parcels, not only to help the development of Blackington Mill, but also to enhance our options for the bike path. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ben and Eric, if you'd like to say a few words.
Nina, too.
Hi, my name is Nina Consa, can you hear me? Everyone can hear me? I've been a member of this community for six years now. Thank you for allowing us to present. North Adams has a multi-century history of manufacturing, visibly in the former mill sites throughout the city, but also invisibly in the contamination left behind by these now obsolete industries. This negative environmental legacy must be addressed so that the community may move for, may move toward an economically sound future. An immediate opportunity is the remediation of the former dumping site for the Barber Leather Company and Weed and Tannery in Blackington. Do you want me to keep going, or do you want to show?
Hey, type for a sec, this is going.
We'll get some visuals.
It is interesting, you can't hear those speakers up here.
Yeah.
No.
That's where I am.
In a nice way.
When we get a bigger budget, we'll get some up front.
Okay, yes, yeah, absolutely.
Take place of the owl.
We're just going to shut it off and turn it back on. That's how it always happens, right?
Looks like we're having problems with a lot of things tomorrow.
Well, I wonder if all of this is sucking stuff now? If all of this extra stuff is sucking.
Counselor Shade?
Yes, through the chair to the mayor and the presenting group while we're waiting for our technical details. I have one question, and one question only. What is the cost to purchase the two lots of land?
So, one, yeah, $1. Tourist already has the options on the property, so it would be just a transfer.
Thank you.
It is not coming on.
Snowstorm.
Is the network, is Wi-Fi's not there, is that it? Go ahead, if you know what you're doing, go ahead. I have no clue, so.
It was easier to have a bulletin board, picture.
It's flashing, it's like it's.
Tina, can you help?
She's going to try.
Do we have Wi-Fi? Two weeks ago, we didn't have it.
Yeah, I don't know.
There you go.
We just need Tina to walk over.
There we go.
Give her a raise.
Do you want to start at the top, you?
Do you want me to start at the beginning?
Yes.
Looks that preferred, okay. North Adams has a multi-century history of manufacturing, visibly in the former mill sites throughout the city, but also invisibly in the contamination left behind by these now obsolete industries. This negative environmental legacy must be addressed so that the community may move toward an economically sound future. An immediate opportunity is the remediation of the former dumping site for the Barber Leather Company and Weed and Tannery in Blackington. The tourist resort has assembled an 80-acre nature campus in Blackington, and at its heart is a parcel that contains roughly 1.5 acre mound of leather scraps dumped there in the 1950s and 60s. Approximately 10 feet high, the mound abuts the Housick River, and extreme storms have exposed the layers of the leather on the bank. No longer out of sight and out of mind, the site must be remediated to achieve the city's forward-looking environmental and economic goals.
Can you speak into the mic more, they can't hear you in the TV at home?
This project aligns the economic development and open space recreation priorities of the city's Vision 2030 Master Plan. As mentioned in our August presentation, Tourist has welcomed nearly 40,000 guests to North Adams since we opened five years ago. We've created 60-plus solid jobs and collected over 800,000 in rooms and meals tax for the city to date. We want to invest further in North Adams and expand the resort to include the historic Blackington Mill campus. Our new eight-figure investment will create 30 new jobs and more economic activity in rooms and meals tax revenue, projected at over 200,000 per year for the city. The tannery dump site blocks circulation between the existing hotel and the proposed mill expansion. As identified in 2017, without remediation, this additional development cannot proceed. The tourist campus is publicly accessible green space with miles of trails, outdoor sculptures, and abundant river access. This remediation creates even more opportunity. outdoor sculptures, and abundant river access. This remediation creates even more opportunities. The route for the North Adams Adventure Trail, the proposed trail connecting existing bike paths to the west and south, must run through the dump property. The existence of this dump in the Housick River floodplain also poses a risk for the health and climate resilience of the watershed. Now is the critical time to act."
Building upon the Blackington history that we shared last month, I'd like to provide you a little historical context for what we're discussing this evening. You love my little history presentations, I know. While best known for textile manufacturing at the Blackington Mill, there's a considerable history of leather tanning in the village as well. This is a nineteen twenty-two property map of the Barber Leather Company, who owned much of the open space and riverfront in Blackington before consolidating their operations over on Union Street. They collaborated with the Blackington Company to establish the industrial waterway, the diverted water from the river for use by both the woolen mill and the tannery. The RJ Whedon Company took over tanning operations at the Ashton Avenue site when Barber moved to Union Street. This is a nineteen forty-two aerial photograph, and the important thing to note is the previous location of this dam here, this is before those floodwalls were constructed, and this was the dam that pushed water in through this headrace into a mill pond that fed both the tannery and the Blackington Mill. You can see a little diagram of how that worked in its heyday. Water coming in, a pond, it could exit out a little side exit here, or travel through the site and re-enter the river down by where the Galvin Road Bridge used to be. This nineteen fifty-two aerial photograph is really important to point out, there's a baseball field right there where the Blackington teams used to play, and you can see it's an open space with a previous recreational use. Nineteen sixty, the, or this is nineteen fifty-two, sorry, nineteen fifty-two, and then nineteen sixty. In March nineteen fifty-seven, during the height of the flood control work in the city, a contractor hired by the Army Corps entered the Whedon Tannery property without permission, cut trees, bulldozed the land, removed soil, and destroyed the dam and headgates. We know this, and that diverted the course of the water from the Housick River away from the canal leading to the tannery. And we know all this from a lawsuit filed against the government by RJ Whedon Company that outlines how the loss of water to the tannery caused the spoilage of hides and the ultimate demise of their business. In nineteen sixty, we can see that the river is now being rerouted here, and those floodwalls and the roll dam are being put in. And we can also see this hide mound beginning to form, where the Whedon Company has been, had to dispose of these spoiled hides and other detritus from their business. In nineteen seven, this is the copy, if anybody wants to read any times, some pretty interesting reading. This is the lawsuit that they filed. In nineteen seventy-two, we see that active dumping has ceased here, but we're able to observe some wet, low-lying areas around it formed by the act of digging soil out from around it to place on top of the pile of leather hides. Nineteen eighty-two, we have some natural reforestation beginning, and though it's hard to see in this, there's a bunch of dirt bike trails, a new recreational use that apparently was happening in Blackington at that time, and we can start to see the decommissioning of the wastewater treatment plant, which closed in nineteen seventy-six. Nineteen ninety-two finds us with thicker forestation here on this parcel and further decommissioning of the sewer plant, and we now see the abandoned tannery site three years before it's burned to the ground in November of ninety-five. The EPA performed tests on the hide mound parcel on several occasions between nineteen eighty and nineteen ninety-six, but risk was determined to be low and no cleanup was scheduled. In twenty eleven, high waters from Hurricane Irene exposed layers of leather hides in the riverbank on the site in this area here. This is the property as we acquired it, or started acquiring the hotel and the properties around it, and as we found it in two thousand fifteen. And in two thousand fifteen, we purchased a five-year option on the hide mound property from CP Development, the current owner, and at the same time, we were working with Mayor Alkenbry to purchase a long-term easement on the former tannery site on Ashton Avenue here, and then also on the former wastewater treatment plant site to the east of the hide mound, to create a publicly accessible nature campus for the hotel. And this option agreement was specifically designed so that it could be assumed by the city in pursuit of state and federal remediation dollars, which are available to municipalities and not available to private businesses. In twenty sixteen, the tourist team engaged environmental engineers Tag and Bond to do a full assessment of the hide mound property. Over the following year, Tag and Bond performed Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three assessments at the property, which included test pits and monitoring wells among, and many other physical testing procedures. They were out there with excavators, exploring the land, figuring out what was there. The city was looped in on all of this work. In twenty seventeen, Tag and Bond issued their complete four hundred and twenty-nine-page report, which was shared with the city. Based on the encouraging results and their specific recommendations, we proceeded with the construction of our suspension bridge over the Housick. The northern abutment of this bridge is on that parcel. Throughout the year, Mayor Alkenbry was facilitating conversations with DEP, EPA, and Berkshire Regional Planning about acquisition and cleanup, and a plan was made to apply for funding in January twenty eighteen. In January ended twenty eighteen, as many of you may remember, the federal government shut down for thirty-five days, and no EPA staff was working. Without their guidance, the city was unable to engage with the application process. From twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, the Trump administration effectively eliminated all EPA Brownfields cleanup funds. And also, and also at that time, we were working hard to open and stabilize the hotel on State Street. From twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, Tourist was focused on keeping our hotel business afloat during the COVID-nineteen pandemic and keeping our staff employed. In twenty twenty, we also had to purchase another five-year option on the property because the hide mound process was still unresolved.
As we began to see some light at the end of the pandemic tunnel, sorry, we re-engaged work on the Blackington Mill redevelopment with fresh energy. On February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, we had our first meeting with the newly inaugurated Mayor Maxey, where we were able to discuss the areas of public and private collaboration that are necessary for us to continue tourist successful expansion and investment in North Adams. The TIF agreement for the mill was on those items, and we're grateful to have checked that off the list with the unanimous support of the council. Thank you. Also at the top of this list was the timely and critical need to complete the hide mound parcel acquisition in order to unlock an array of opportunities, not only the redevelopment of the Blackington Mill as part of the tourist campus, but also to finally solidify a route for the western half of the North Adams Adventure Trail. Both of these projects require immediate resolution of this environmental issue in order to proceed. Opportunity was also knocking in early twenty-two as the Biden administration had restored Brownfields remediation funding, and it was anticipated that significant additional environmental cleanup funding would be included in the federal infrastructure bill, which has happened in a very big way. And the application deadline, as announced last week, is November thirteenth. The city must control this property in order to apply for cleanup funding in November. We presented the required documentation, a memorandum of understanding, an assignment of option, a deed, and an amended version of the easement agreement from twenty fourteen that includes these other tax parcels, to the mayor's office on August first, twenty twenty-two. After three months of diligent communication about the urgency of this matter for the mill redevelopment and the advancement of the adventure trail, the mayor signed the memorandum of understanding on November seventh, twenty twenty-two. Acting in good faith, based on the terms of that agreement, we have allocated significant additional resources toward the mill development and bike trail alignment. Our team has gone right to work. We've created a full design for the mill, informed by the feedback of forty thousand guests. We've applied for additional historic rehabilitation tax credits and state grants to support infrastructure improvements in the neighborhood. Sorry about that. Mass does pretty close these days, but it will be better when it's done for the whole neighborhood. We've undertaken hazardous building material remediation. We've engaged Bar &amp; Bar, a large first-class construction management firm, and it's very important to note, we assembled a team of nineteen full-time staff to prepare for this development. We've also worked with the city and state to create a design for the hide mound remediation that employs a consolidate and cap approach, the least expensive remediation option. And after years of diligent work, it also meets the requirements of mass DOT for the bike path. Did I also mention it's publicly accessible and really beautiful? That's what we propose right there. We've continued to undertake our work at an accelerated pace even as the economic environment has become increasingly unfriendly for development of this nature. In this current economic environment, we will be utilizing existing equity, historic rehabilitation tax credits, property assessed clean energy financing, small business association financing, and traditional bank financing in order to make this project launch and succeed. We have expressed to the city from the beginning that a permanent solution for the hide mound land is a prerequisite to our being able to secure financing for our project. The solution that was agreed upon in the memorandum of understanding is that the city would take title to the parcels and seek state and federal funds for the remediation with our support and advocacy. The easement we purchased from the city for the former tannery on Ashton would be amended to include these parcels, consistent with the plans we developed with the city many years ago. This memorandum of understanding is the agreement we placed our faith in as we continue to devote our full attention to the mill redevelopment. As we move forward with our work, new information and inconsistencies with the agreement were revealed after many months. First, that the mayor was not empowered to acquire the property, and that city council approval was required. Okay, get us in front of them, please. We need this to secure our financing. And you can see it right there. Tourist is not connected, in a fee, simple title, whatever the terminology is, to the Blackington Mill. We've created an option for this hind mound, which unlocks enormous potential, not only for our private development, but also for this public infrastructure. But we can't get a bank loan until we resolve this matter. And I'm sure there are other people in this room who own businesses. Mountain One owns Tourist. That's how you make a building. You have to get a loan to do it. Because this project has just been delayed and delayed and delayed, we are at a breaking point right now where we really need to resolve this urgently in order to get financing and keep everything on track. We presented our TIF agreement on August eighth with a vote on the twenty-second, and it was our clear understanding that this connected topic would be heard on September twelfth. It has been delayed until this meeting. We can delay no more. We need resolution immediately, or all of these opportunities will go away for Tourist and the city. Yesterday, I received an email from the city's attorney introducing a new phrase, which could delays the city acquisition, which could delay the city's acquisition of these parcels. Subject to the mayor's sole discretion and approval until February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and potentially further. That kills the opportunity for us to secure financing for our mill development, and by extension, it kills the opportunity for the city to build a bike trail on this land. We have communicated as much, and no amendments have been made. I ask, not knowing how this body works, that those counselors who do understand your role and capability, please not only grant the mayor permission to acquire this land, but please use what tools you have to implore the city to please close this acquisition in October, so that, one, we can get a desperately needed loan, and, two, we can help the city apply in November for remediation funds. Also, please eliminate these new contingent liabilities, which are an insurmountable barrier to our project securing financing. We need to leave this meeting with a clear resolution, above and beyond the mayor's presented proposal. Years of diligent work and significant expense have brought us to this moment. A mountain of research has been done. All of the documents are in place. We have a mass DOT-approved bike trail route, which has been designed to require the minimum range of remediation expense. And in this moment, funding is available, more funding than at any other time in history, and applications are due on November thirteenth. The addition of the Blackington Mill to the tourist resort, combined with publicly accessible outdoor recreation amenities, and the acquisition of this leather pile, will position Tourist as a new regional superlative in scope and quality. The jobs, additional rooms and meals tax revenue, increased tourism, and outdoor recreation opportunities that will be created by an expanded Tourist are critically needed for the future of North Adams. By investing in the redevelopment of the Blackington Mill through a definite commitment to assume title to this property, the city can multiply and amplify Tourist's deep commitment to the community and already substantial private investment. It is a privilege to work in North Adams. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Please use your seat to authorize the acquisition, and additionally, to communicate to the mayor, delay no more. Please take definitive action in order to preserve the opportunity for Tourist to develop the Blackington Mill, and therein preserve the opportunity for the city and state to build a bike trail along this route. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lights. Questions? Counselor Wilkinson?
I'd like to hear from the mayor first, though. Just...
So, part of the delay with the February fifteenth date is that when we did our first round of testing, now, keep in mind, Tourist has done a tremendous amount of work on this property. It was recommended to us that we do a stage one environmental risk characterization and stage one to inquire the receiving facility, and that's the delay. The delay is three months. I will readily say publicly I was slow out of the gate. I will tell you that. However, as we proceed forward, we just need to have, we have two tests that need to be done. One that can be done in three weeks, which puts us in the October timeline, and then the other one that could be completed in December, but with the holidays, we added some time on to that. Tourist needed a date certain, so we picked February fifteenth. We're hoping that we can get all of the testing done, but my job is to make sure that we're checking all the boxes and that we understand what we're inheriting. Now, at the end of the day, do I think we have a super fund? No, because you've done a lot of research.
We know exactly what's there.
So, I need to be certain and check all those boxes. And I do believe that the project could be anywhere from one million to maybe even sixteen million, but the sixteen million is even scary. But, right.
So, it's at the...
No, 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 just me. No, let me just...
You're okay, Ben.
But we're really thinking that it's going to be, you know, a lower level, as you said, Ben, type of, what do they call it, a superficial barrier and deed restriction type of capping.
It's a consolidated cap. We designed...
Excuse me, you can't, if you're going to speak, you have to speak at the mic. They can't hear you at home.
But I agree. This is an important project. I want to work with Tourist, but I also have an obligation to the community to do our due diligence, and that's what we're doing. I readily admit that we were slow out of the gate. We are doing everything in our power, and the sole discretion piece, you know, at the end of the day, the city council authorized us to purchase the property. We get these two tests back. I couldn't sign any faster. But that's where we're at. And I do want us to acquire this property so we can apply for grant funds, and we can continue to work in a positive manner with Tourist. But I need a little more time. Not for the acquisition piece, for the testing piece. That's all.
I do have a question. You said it has been recommended that we get these tests.
Yes.
By whom?
By Tom, I never can say it right.
Belosi.
Belosi, who is an LSP, who is also doing work for us, and Ty and Bond, who worked for Tourist. That's the piece they didn't do. So, this is just a continuation of the Tourist work. And that is underway currently. It's currently underway. So, what's before you tonight is to give me authorization to accept this property for a dollar, and we are going to proceed as fast as we can to help Tourist. Go ahead, Ben.
May I speak? Thank you.
Wait a minute. My frustration just comes through the crossing of topics. So, there's an acquisition topic, and there's a Brownfield discovery topic. And the Brownfield discovery began six, seven years ago, and was done to a very thorough degree. We have a very full understanding of it. We've, for two years, been working on this issue with the mayor. And as I said, a development needs a financing partner, and we've been proceeding without a partner for probably longer than was even realistically feasible. And we are at a breaking point where we need that financing. If it's the case that closing is not, I can't understand February fifteenth. The applications are due November thirteenth. Why would we miss the opportunity to get that funding? I don't understand it. But basically, the issue is, there's an acquisition process, and there's a discovery process...
process. This has been going for a very long time. We were on a path through acquisition, and then there's this introduction of an LSP or a licensed site professional who understands brownfields, and they become convoluted, as if we're going to somehow resolve the brownfields issue before the acquisition, which is literally impossible. It presupposes access that doesn't exist until the city acquires. So, there's a presupposition of certain key elements, and there's a, I feel as though there's a lack of appreciation for our structural need to provide for a lender physical connection between the existing hotel and the hotel expansion. We fundamentally need that, whether it arrives tomorrow or in three months. I can't go seeking financing, which, by the way, will take many months if I'm successful until I have that. And so, I appeal to you in this very awkward way, I love working with Jen, but it's about timing. We can't wait. It can't be at the discretion of an individual. We have all the information that's relevant. There's a 429-page document. We need action or the opportunity, I don't even want to say, but it will go away. We will not be able to sustain any longer unless we can resolve this issue. And so, I appeal to you tonight to please, whatever tools you have, communicate to the mayor the urgency of resolving this matter, because we need to resolve it if we're going to find success in this private development and the public infrastructure project.
Thank you for that explanation. Councillor Wilkinson, you had a question.
I believe it's been answered. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councillor Bona?
So, we're asked to use what tools we have, and I think what you're asking are tools that we don't have. I mean, we can obviously approve the purchase, but beyond that, we do not have the authority to tell the administration how they can proceed after that. We can encourage it and we can say, but I think you've expressed it pretty well yourself. I'm just saying, you know, all we could do is repeat what you said, and, you know, if the mayor and the administration feel like they need to do these steps, we cannot deny them, you know, if that is the steps that, you know, she wishes to do. Again, I don't know what we could repeat that you haven't already said, and I believe the mayor is hearing you, but, you know, she's also got other voices saying other things also, so I don't know what else we can do beyond saying we can agree with this acquisition.
I would agree with that. I think you've made that, that's pretty much the, what we can do is approve the purchase, or giving, we can approve giving the mayor the authority to purchase. Councillor Harpin, and I thought I saw another hand over here. Okay.
Yeah, I agree. Within our realm of the city council, we can approve the acquisition or sale of property. So, that is, that is based on our charter, our ordinances. That's what we can do. However, I just kind of really want to understand, it's been a lot thrown at me in a few minutes here, so I'm just trying to understand. I do understand that you certainly do need this financing, and you certainly want to be part of the infrastructure bill by November 13th, which is really a short timeframe.
Well, it's been years. This means it's...
From here to November 13th, it's a very, very tight timeline to me anyway, so I'm sure you're, you really want to get this completed as soon as possible. My question through the chair to the mayor, you said that there's two tests that need to be done, and it's going to take about three months, correct?
Yeah, one test will be done in three weeks, and the other test, they're saying that it could take up to three months. We're certainly willing to push that timeline, but I'm kind of stuck.
And these are from engineers saying...
The DAP told us, our LSP told us, and that's what we're trying to abide by. I have no doubt in my mind that their data is accurate. We work with Ty and Bond also. I have no doubt in my mind that they're not hiding anything from us. I want to see this go through, and we will move as fast as we can, which Ben and I work at different speeds, but he needs this. So, we want to get approval to purchase this land. We will apply for funds, and we will continue on with our testing. Unfortunately, it doesn't line up with the timeline that Ben needs, the second test. And we'll do everything we can to move that along as quick as we can. I would hope that, you know, we've gone back and forth on a lot of wording of what Ben's attorney wants, what our attorney wants, and at the end of the day, we all want the same thing. We want to clean up the land, and we want it to be part of Tourist, and we want to help it for the bike path. We all want the same thing, but how we're getting there right now is a little different. I also enjoy working with the Tourist people. I don't want them to go away, but I feel I have a responsibility to take the recommendation of the professionals and just do this extra test.
Okay. Just, if I could, just one more question. I'm sorry. Of the two tests, so the first one will be done in three weeks and then, or, yes, in the second one within three months, is that a test that's ever been done before? Have we ever, is that test ever been completed in that parcel previously?
I don't believe the stage-two has been done. Go ahead. Go ahead.
So, there, one is not a test. It's a phase-one, 21E, which is a, it's a doc, anytime, I'm sure Councillor Wilkinson knows, it's like anytime you purchase a property, you do one of these, it's like done from a desk. It's not actual testing. The second item is a stage-two environmental risk assessment. Those were not part of the rubric in 2017 when we did this testing, and it's a new thing that's, so what we, all of our testing assessed harm to humans. This new element assesses, it's superficial sampling to see if there has been any, they call it the like birds and bees test, is it's like, to see if anything has been harmful to that, but it's not something, the results of it would not, and I think this was confirmed in a conversation I had with the city's LSP, Tom Biocci, that the results of that test are not something that you go, oh, my God, there's a completely different thing here than we thought existed, because we've already done the holes and the monitoring wells and all the things. It's just another layer of discovery. But really, that forms more, more about, and like Ben said, this is kind of pre-preconstruction work, right? There's, once we get past this and the parcel is acquired, then there's a phase of like designing, for lack of a better word, and engineering, how the remediation actually gets done, how the consolidation and capping works, what kind of, how much you put over here and how much you put over here and how much you pull away from the river, and what kind of cap goes on it, and what kind of deed restriction and all of that kind of stuff. That's the next phase, but that's not something we entertain, and, I mean, we can entertain until we get to this next step.
Can I add to what you're saying? In terms of the possible range of costs, we, there was earlier worked on, and the city recently did an update to that work, so a cap in remediation would cost approximately 750 to 1.1 million dollars. Within that document, there's a very scary range, you know, that's if you pick it up and drive it all to the other side of the world, I don't know. And so, you could look at that range, but we have designed very specifically to meet this minimum requirement. I would also like to say that these new tests were not part of the previous agreement, the acquisition agreement, and so I have a fear that there will be new tests, because we all started from a place and it was about acquisition, and we were doing discovery together, and now there's a new goalpost, and that is disheartening and concerning when you have so much on the line, and when I have so many people whose dinner is on the line. This is a process that is good for all involved. You have the tools that we need. We have 99% of the tools, but we need this 1% in order to, and we need it urgently, not within a timeframe that's six months. These tests presuppose access that does not exist. There is no test in three weeks or two months without first completing the acquisition. It's a necessary first step.
Councillor Barbo, and then Councillor Oleskowitz.
Yeah, I'm going to try to simplify this down in the most basic of terms. I'm listening to Mayor Maxi give an explanation of a timeline of three weeks and three months, and I'm watching the folks from Tourist in the back, and I apologize, I don't know any of you, shaking your heads, know that that timeline is just not going to work for you. So, what I want to clearly understand is, if we go ahead and approve the acquisition of this land, it's North Adams buying this, we then are taking on this 10-foot mound and looking for Brownsfield money, and there is not a commitment at that point, because the timeline doesn't work for you to go forward with your project. Is that what, is that what you're saying with, because I'm not sure what all the headshaking is about, that the timeline isn't going to work for your proposal?
Mayor?
Yes.
The timeline of closing in October and applying for funding in November, our project continues, the bike trail opportunity continues. The timeline of an individual sole discretion into February of 2024, we won't make it there.
And I ask one follow-up question. Was this information and this need available when the Blackington plan came through here a month ago looking for the TIF? This was, I don't recall this at all being mentioned at that time.
When we came through a month ago, it was our very clear understanding that on September 12th, we would be heard about the acquisition, and these new tests had not been mentioned to us. In fact, it was a prerequisite to making public representations about the project that we would be resolving this matter.
Thank you. I hadn't heard about it either, so we're in the same boat there. Thank you.
Councillor Oleskowitz.
My question is on the same line as Councillor Barbo. I'm sitting here just in observation as the mayor's speaking, Mr. Svensson just continually shaking his head no, so just clearly would like to know what the difference is within what we're being presented here tonight.
Ben needs to have the land acquisition closed in October. Correct. Well, no.
It's not me personally. The business needs it.
In October. We don't want to close until we have this second test done.
So, I have a question.
It's the...
Just so you get this odd vibe that the administration and the representatives from Tourist are on the same page, but as the mayor's speaking, I'm continually watching a no-headshake and...
At the end of, at the end of the day, we're on the same page. It's the route that we're traveling that we're differing on.
I have a question. The city has to own the property to apply for the, so if we don't own the property, you can't apply for the funds for November 13th.
Correct.
Do you have a magic ball and think we're going to get more money later?
Well, there's a lot of Brownsfield's money out there, but we're hoping that with the council order, we can submit it in the grant application. By the time it's renewed, we'll own the property and have all the test results.
Okay. Councillor Wilkinson.
I'm certainly not an expert on any of this. I think when it gets down to the final result, we either have to trust the mayor, who probably knows more about this than we do. We can approve the selling of the parcels. She still gets the final say as to whether they're going to be bought or not, and obviously, she's doing her due diligence and her homework, and she's not just saying, oh, yeah, let's go, let's go. She's...
There's no doubt in my mind that I want to work with Tourist, and that at the end of the day, we, 99.9% will buy these properties.
You're missing my point.
Okay.
My point is, we have to trust those who are the city's leaders when it comes to items that we don't know as much about as maybe the mayor's office or the people from Tourist. It's, I'm going to vote for this just because I, we certainly don't always agree on everything, but in this particular case, I'm going to trust her to make the right decision when it comes to the end.
Well, I also, I want to clarify, we're not talking, honestly, our role here is to vote to allow the mayor to buy the property.
That's it.
For a dollar. Because we obviously believe in the project that's kind of been laid out in this order. It's not to get into timelines and everything else, and I just want to clarify that so that we don't keep going around and round on a rabbit hole about what deadline and when's this happening and when's that happening. We, we're to vote on this. Councillor Oleskowitz, Councillor Shade, and then Councillor Bona.
Just for the record, my comments were just observation. I have no intent of blocking, I just gave a little misleading point for a moment, and I do thank you for the investment. I have no intent of having any...
Councillor Shade.
Yes, through the chair to Tourist, I have a question for one of your representatives. If we approve this and we buy the land, but it's after that deadline date in October, is that going to cause the project to come to an end, or are you still going to pursue the project?
Yes, that's...
We have to hear you. We can't...
Yes. I don't want to be in this situation, and it's not personal to me or my objectives. It's a structural requirement of a business that has cash flow needs and has almost 80 employees and the requirement to go to a lender, and while an individual's expression of a 99% accuracy could be sufficient for a city councillor or me in a trusting environment, it will not suffice to JP Morgan for good reason. And when they lay, you know, over $10 million on the line, they will need this to have been solved, pre-preconstruction. We are way late on this, and that's why I forced this issue, and I apologize if I haven't done it in the most diplomatic fashion. I just don't really know how to achieve the objective I need, given the path within the structure of the city government. And I just want to articulate it for this community, because I think we all care about this thing, and ask, please, to hear our need in terms of timing, because the timing really matters. It has mattered for quite a while, so thank you.
Councillor Bona.
Again, we've explained, several have explained what we can do tonight, and, you know, I will approve this to at least get the first step of what we can do with the acquisition. This one's going to go through the chair to the mayor, and the way I'm seeing it is, this is the way I'm understanding it, and why the two sides may disagree, but you have other professionals explaining to you that you should do these tests, and I'm guessing the reason they're saying you should do these tests is you want to make sure we're not going to be stuck with something that we don't believe may be there, but there could be something else under that dirt that we don't want, because the tests, you know, they're saying we want these tests. One thing I didn't really hear is, other than the hides, what else are we expecting to find under the dirt, under this mound, and what would be making it worse than what it is? Because if it's going to get cleaned up, and if they say do this test, and, you know, there's already something saying, here's what's there, but do these tests, you might find something else, and if we do find something else, then what? Are we stuck with it?
We're still going to clean it up.
Okay. So, if we clean it up, and I understand Tourist, you've got some courage in your hands, and you're saying, we don't hit this deadline, we're done. That's too bad, but if the land does get cleaned up and the city, you know, gets paid for, you know, again, we can't make the mayor go any faster than what, you know, if she's going to want to do these processes, we can't make that happen. So, I will approve the acquisition, and the land will get cleaned, but beyond that, I don't know what else we can do for you.
And we will do, the administration will do everything we can to move this along, and that's all I can say. The testing, the testing needs to be done.
So, the second test, again, the reason why we want to do it is because, is to find something, they're saying you want to test it because we might find something else?
Just to complete the circle, or is the recommendation of our consultant to do, we recommend first conducting a stage-two environmental risk characterization and a stage-two environmental risk characterization. It was recommended in Ty and Bond, but to our knowledge, it wasn't conducted, so they honed in on that, and we want to just do that test.
But if we don't, what is the worst situation?
We probably are in the same position, but we hire people to make recommendations to us. to us, and even the DEP has said that we should do this test. At this end of the day, we may be in the same result with that lower level, and that would be great for all of us, but I don't know what I don't know. They are, they are very knowledgeable, and I doubt that they're lying to me, but I have been advised by scientists to tell me to do this test. So that's what I'm doing.
Again, but I, I'm not hearing the answer if they find more or less or exactly, if we still clean it up, right?
At the end of the day, we're still going to clean it up, but we'll have a better understanding of what we have and what the cost is.
Okay, let's kind of wrap it up, because we're going down the rabbit hole on things that aren't really related. I think we've done, we've...
Just follow what Keith said.
Can I, I want to hear from Counselor Shade first, and then I'll make a decision.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to the mayor, is this test, is this required in order for the grant funding to go through, or to secure funding for the project? Would it affect that in any way?
It would just give us a better cost estimate of what we have.
Okay, thank you.
It's just really more of a due diligence than part of the grant application.
Counselor Wilkinson?
I'd like to make a motion to move the question. We're just going, we're going around in circles here.
I was just about to get to that.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Again.
All in favor of moving the question?
Aye.
Aye.
How many we got? Raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five. We have five, we have a quorum. We're moving the question. So actually, that paper is done, and we move on to the actual order, which is an order authorizing the city of North Adams, acting by and through its mayor, be authorized to accept assignment of option to purchase real property consisting of parcels 90-0-14 and 96-0-1 and 1A.
Move to acquire.
Move to adopt the order, is what you need.
Move to adopt the order, then. Second.
Second. Any more discussion? I'm going to do a roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. EEA's motion carries. Thank you for your time and for your presentation. Without objection, I would like to move Council Paper 12,00312, Communication from Clerk Leonazio requesting time for Zachary Dumont from General Code to provide a presentation on the updated ordinance site and the codification process with General Code. He has a long ride home, and I don't think he needs to watch the rest of our sausage being made. Thank you. Chief, you're welcome to leave, too. Please, you could have left when you were done.
He's enjoying it, isn't he?
No one's going that far. Are we, seems to be a brain drain on the internet for everything that we have poked
Hopefully you can all hear me. I can hear me. I like this sound system. My name is Zachary Dumont, I am the account manager with General Code. General Code has served the city of North Adams for its codification needs for several decades now. Tina and I met back in June, I believe, to discuss getting the community's code up
up here.
to date, because it's been a few years and a few clerks since there last been any sort of integration into the online municipal code portal. And that started a series of questions about how we can get things improved, back on track, make sure things are up to date, that the public has an accurate code record, and that, most importantly, for the folks in town and the folks that make up the city council, that you know how to find it, navigate it, and use it. So I'm going to go through and just kind of explain a little bit about what eCode is, where folks can find it. Thank you very much. And what you can do from the code website. So this, if you've ever looked at North Adams laws, should be familiar. This platform is called eCode 360. It's a, it's a software that my company has developed to publish and help manage your municipal code. We will go through as we build the code, as we build out a municipal code and add pieces to the site over time. So most codes usually start out with just the general ordinances. Over time, we might see charters get adopted and amended in, and usually zoning is what follows last. But the idea is, we want to create a single repository for all legislative items in your community, so anybody, whether they're a councillor or a developer, or just an average, everyday citizen, can look to see what laws that they're being held accountable to. I'm going to log out just briefly, so you can see what you're going to see if you were just John Smith at 123 Main Street. You're going to see that the code is broken down into several parts. You can scroll down to the bottom, see the appendix and a code comparative table, and all of these chapters are going to be clickable. So if I was somebody who wanted to learn about the building code, Chapter 3, just click right on Chapter 3, and it's going to load up with the current code that has been supplemented by the city. And I'll explain supplementation later. But you can go through and look by individual sections. You can click on these, and they'll hyperlink to that portion of the code. If you go down a bit further, though, you'll actually get to the main code content. For the average, everyday person who's unsure about what laws there are in the community, or if they can do something or not do something, whether their dog needs to be licensed, for example, they're just going to go to the code page, they're going to scroll down, probably to the animals chapter, and say, does my dog need a license? Yes, all dogs must be licensed, or no. Very easy. If, however, I wasn't sure where to find something, the search bar right up at the top is fairly intuitive, and it's going to look for context-based code material. So if you're looking for the phrase "dog license," it's going to look for that phrase as it is in the code content. If you looked for "dog" or "license" separately, it would look for each iteration of the term "dog" and each iteration of the term "license." And the reason why we built the search engine that way is so that when folks are looking for results within their code, they're going to get relevant answers, as opposed to every single reference that's in there. And a really great way of explaining this is, if you've ever hit Ctrl+F to search a PDF, if you type in the word "apple," you type the letter "A," you're going to see 10,000 letter "As" that pop up. Then "P," you're going to see every "AP," and it's not going to have a lot of logic to it. But eCode is designed so that whether it's a licensing question, or a tax question, or an administrative question, you're going to find all the code content that you need access to. If I was somebody who wasn't sure what laws had been adopted by the town recently, the city, sorry, recently, that were outstanding, waiting to be included into the code, that's a process we call supplementation, you're going to see on the left-hand side in the index, a section that says "new laws." And right now, you guys have quite a bit. Tina and I are working to get those updated, and I expect that we should see that number go down shortly. But "new laws" is where every single item passed by the city council and sent to General Code is going to sit until the city's ready to do a code update. Usually, that requires us to hard-code all the language in to XML, which is a publishing language. Then we'll update the online site, and if you're a community that has physical code books, we'll send you printed inserts so you can have your hard copies up to date. As your community adopts legislation, this "new laws" should grow and shrink over time. You're adding new stuff in, so the number goes up, and then you update your code so that number goes down. But what we want to make sure is that if there's a delay between updating the code book and a law being passed, that that new law is still accessible 100% of the time, 24/7. So nobody can say, well, we didn't know that that was a law, it's right there on that code portal. And what's nifty about this is you'll see, all of those new laws that are on the, in that section, are also then going to be marked where they belong within the code. So you're going to see these scrolls throughout on the right-hand side. So if I wasn't sure what was happening, I would see, hey, look, Chapter 7, Department of Public Services, there's a little scroll, and if you highlight over it, it'll say, new laws have been added to this part of the code. And when you click on that chapter, the first thing that you're going to see are all of those outstanding laws that were adopted and were waiting to incorporate into your municipal code. So for me, if I had a question, I wasn't sure, and I wanted to see, as developments have occurred, for example, to Chapter 3 building code, I could look at all those raw ordinances that have been adopted and get further context and clarification. Bear with me just a moment. There we go. So you'll also notice that there are a couple buttons up here at the top. The first and probably easiest one that most folks are going to look for is going to be this download button, because occasionally, you want a piece of the code or you want the entire code. The way eCode works is these chapters have checkboxes next to them, and within the chapters, there are checkboxes next to the sections and subsections. If I needed a copy of the code, let's say I wanted to come in here and talk about an issue that was important to me to the city council, I could hit the download button and just grab those individual sections of the code and print myself a PDF copy. Very nifty for quickly getting someone access to the document as they need it, instead of having to go and buy a whole code volume, and somebody goes through, and they're miserable because you have a 1,200-page municipal code to read. You can also email certain sections of the code, or the whole code, just by clicking the email button. And what this will do is, it'll pop up a link to whatever part of the code you're referencing. So if I were a city official, for example, and I had somebody calling with a question, said, hey, am I allowed to canvass in this community? Sure, here's a link to Chapter 4, here's the relevant statutes. If you have any questions, give us a call or send me an email. There are two other areas that are going to be public-facing. You'll notice on the left-hand side here, there are two notes that are on this code, and there are a couple of public documents. Within the notes, you'll get a collection of any item that was appended somewhere else in the code, and you can actually just click on these little hyperlinks to the side, it'll bring you right there. Oops, sorry, clicked the wrong button. And you'll see that there's some information spliced throughout your city zoning chapter. Usually, what we see is town clerks, or attorneys, or mayors, or other officials within the community. If there's something important going on, or if there's information that you want to clearly communicate, put a note right at the top of your code. That way, there, the folks who are in the audience could say, oh, hey, yeah, this is important, and now I can access it, and it's helpful. One thing that we see quite frequently used is a link to like a permitting system. So if you have a separate permitting website, you're looking at the regulations for if you can build a shed, and right there up at the top, click the button, now you can fill out the permit for your shed, assuming you're allowed to. And then public documents, you'll see we've got some agendas and minutes there. This is, again, additional public resources that are available. And the idea is, we want to add notes and public documents to enhance the quality of the code material that you're reading, and to give folks further context. This, both the notes and the public document section are a little bit new for North Adams, this is something that Tina and I are working through, but the idea is that over time, we want to expand the code website to include other important items. So for example, if later on, you passed an ordinance that affected, let's say, that area near the parcel land that Taurus was talking about, well, you could also then have minutes or agendas related to your original working session, such as tonight, that folks could pull up and see alongside the context of that code material. Very nifty. I'm going to log in right up at the top, and this is the part where it hopefully becomes a little bit less boring for our city councillors, because this is nowhere near as fun as talking about purchasing property. But you'll see, when you log in, a few more buttons appear. ECode is a little bit segregated. The way we've designed it is so that the average, everyday member of the public, who has no idea how to navigate a set of laws, can go through and get all the information they need at their fingertips. But for municipal users, we want to give them a suite of tools that makes managing and updating your code significantly easier than just taking a PDF copy and highlighting over it, or chicken scratching in between the lines to add to your code. So when you log in, and this is something that we can give every city councillor, if you haven't done so already, you're going to see that there are a couple buttons up top. We have an advanced search button and a multi-code search button. I'll explain those in a bit. But you'll also see that you have access to the add note feature, and under download, you now have the ability to download a Word version of the code. So if you wanted to go in and draft a new version for Chapter 15 litter, you could go within that chapter, find the section that you thought was important, let's say litter on vacant lots, and then you can download a Word copy of just that version, of just that piece of the code. And what makes it better than just a standard copy and paste is you're going to have all of that same code structure in the Word document. So all you have to do is turn on track changes or redline, and you can go through and start drafting new legislation, instead of having to copy-paste eight different sections, and you get an ugly-looking document that you're presenting to the city council. In addition to the buttons on the side over here and in this main menu, I want to show you just a few items in the index over here, and then I'll get into some of the advanced searching. You'll notice that we have a button called Archives. The way eCode works is every time you supplement your code, you're adding supplementary material to your code, before we publish the new updated version of that live code, we're going to save the current version, as well as all new laws that apply to that coming supplement. So in this case, we can go back through 2013, and we could look at the code as it looked literally a decade ago, to see what the code looked like at that point in time. In this case, we can look at the building code, for example. And if I were somebody who was doing some legal research, I could pull up an archived version of the code, grab the current copy of the code, and I could go line by line and figure out, oh, hey, we changed XYZ on this date and time, this was the ordinance, we need to readdress this, but it gives you that ability to have some history there. If you're an attorney or someone who really likes boring, you know, legalese, this is a really great tool to have. Your average, everyday city councillor is probably not going to go through every single archive, but know that it's available for you if you had questions. You know, let's say you wanted to go back and look at some legislation that occurred during pandemic, for example, you can see as your code updated with the actions that you took during those two very long years. So off to the left-hand side, I'll just show you very quickly. If you click the advanced search, you can go through and get a more technical way of searching the code. You can look for all words within a series, you can look for certain phrases, you could exclude certain words in your code search, depending on what you wanted to find. So in this case, we could look for license and, rather, we'll do it the other way, "dog license." And you'll see that you're searching for the term "dog" and "license" as individual, and you'll see in this case, the first result you get, licensing of dogs, as opposed to the phrase "dog license." Again, you can go through and contextualize your search. It's a little bit easier to use the advanced search button, depending on what you're looking for, because you'll actually be able to go through and break it down. But you can go even further and look only at code content, or you could look at attachments within the code, or definitions, or if you wanted to look only in public documents or notes. And then on the far-right-hand side here, if you click this multi-code button, you have access to every single municipal code in our database across the country. There's no extra fee for this.
Nice.
during pandemic, for example. You can see as your code updated with the actions that you took during those two very Off to the left-hand side, I'll just show you very quickly. If you click the advanced search, you can go through and get a more technical way of searching the code. You can look for all words within a series. You can look for certain phrases. You could exclude certain words in your code search depending on what you wanted to find. So in this case, we could look for license and, rather, we'll do it the other way, dog license. And you'll see that you're searching for the term "dog" and "license" as individual, and you'll see in this case, the first result you get licensing of dogs as opposed to the phrase "dog license." Again, you can go through and contextualize your search. It's a little bit easier to use the advanced search button depending on what you're looking for, because you'll actually be able to go through and break it down. But you can go even further and look only at code content, or you could look at attachments within the code, or definitions, or if you wanted to look only in public documents or notes. And then on the far right-hand side here, if you click this multi-code button, you have access to every single municipal code in our database across the country. There's no extra fee for this. You're a codified user, and what a lot of folks in Massachusetts like, because we have 139 codes in mass, is a councillor called me, I want to say like four months ago, asking about developing a fee schedule. If you wanted to look at other fee schedules in other communities to get an idea of how to structure it, just go over to left-hand side, click State, click Massachusetts, hit that little plus button. Oh, apparently we're up to 140 now. That's new. And then you could then go through and look for the term "fee schedule," and suddenly you're going to get, you know, 200, 300 results, whatever it is, of every single code in Massachusetts. Now, this is looking at all cities and all towns, but if you wanted to break it down so it was just cities, you can do that. If you wanted to look at just towns, you can do that. You could also go through and refine by population size or distance from your zip code. But this is really nifty. If you have a big project that's coming up, let's say you were licensing a cannabis dispensary, and you've never done it before. If somebody else has already done it, it's a legal law, they've done all the legwork, take their law and craft it for your community. It's going to save you a lot of headache, and it's probably going to be easier to get through legal scrutiny if it's already on the books elsewhere. And you'll see off to the left-hand side, again, you can go through and further refine those searches down. So if you only wanted to look at code content, that'll update. You can go by county. Let's say we wanted to look just at Berkshire County. So all those results are going to update, nice and easy. Now, I've given you a lot of information in a short amount of time, and this is a little bit boring compared to the last presentation that you had. If you have questions, let's talk.
Mayor has a question, and then councillor Harpen.
Oh, just a quick question. I thought it was great that we can really do comparables with other communities that are similar to us or within our zip code. Is that something we can also download into an Excel spreadsheet? Can you download the, if you do?
Excel, no, but you can grab the individual results, and you can still grab the PDF copies if you wanted. So yeah, you can do that. You can also from those search results, if you wanted to just grab a list of like the hyperlinks and send yourself an email so you could go back later and say, "Hey, these are the 10 that I found most interesting. Here they are." Super nifty.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
How do you like that podium?
It's very nice.
The part where you can search and you can pull up other communities, can you also track if they're making changes to their ordinances? Will you see the red lines?
No. So we don't publish any laws that are not officially adopted. If we did, there'd probably be a lot of trouble out there. So what you can see, though, is every new law that is waiting to be included, and those are segregated off to the side. So you'll see that there's something special about them. They're new. They're just pending supplementation, but that'll probably give you an idea of what's the most recent activity in the last, you know, 30 to 90 days. Most communities in Massachusetts update once a year. Cities typically update twice a year. So there's usually a little bit of lag time where you'll see a bunch of items and new laws. Makes sense?
Councillor Bona.
Why do we have to wait to update for a new law to go into an E-code?
Like, why does it take time to do a supplement, or?
Well, so you showed that there was 35 new laws, I think, for North Adams. Why would they not just automatically, when a new law is submitted, just get updated versus having to wait for the city to update? Is it a fee? Is that what it is?
So we do send an invoice for the additional code work that we do, and I can get into the technical real quick. When you send us a PDF or a Word document or an image of laws, we are not taking that language and just copy-pasting it into the code. We take every single document, we convert it to XML. To give you an idea, it's similar to HTML, like what you'd see for a publishing language. All of that data then gets stored in your master code file, and then our editors will go through and they'll insert throughout the code. But as they're doing that, they're going to build hyperlinks within the chapters, add editors' notes, update at the bottom of the code the code comparative table as changes go in, and really important, they're going to look for the immediate context around the law. So if you, let's say, let's say you passed an ordinance that said all houses must be painted purple. I don't know, it's silly. But you referenced Chapter 15 subsection A, but it's not Chapter 15 subsection A. It's actually subsections F and G and H and I. We're going to go through as a part of that work that we're invoicing you for, we're going to reach out to the city clerk and say, "Hey, we want to make sure that we have these references." So that's why there's a little bit of time to actually make the update happen after it's been authorized. But the reason why those haven't been updated in a few years is you had four or five city clerks who didn't authorize any changes to occur to the code, and our original agreement was that we would only update the code at the request of the city. So what would happen is we would send you an estimate to update the code, and I'm guessing it's probably because there was some employee shuffling over the last few years, those estimates never, you know, got updated.
So to be clear, so we prove an ordinance, goes back to the city clerk, the city clerk sends it over to you.
We'll get it online typically within three days.
Well, but it sits there until you send back an estimate of what it will cost, and then the city approves that?
Couple of ways looking at it.
I get the technical of why it might take a while, but I'm just trying to think again, you mentioned that it will be there until the city updates.
Yes, so what I was going to say was, it depends on how frequently you want to update your code. Some communities, it's not a lot, but some, they want an automatic update every time there's a new law. I personally love that because I like having a current record. Other communities, whether it's a budget item matter, or they just like doing it on a quarterly update, they'll sit, and then let's say it's quarterly, we might reach out to you at the end of March and say, "Hey, you passed five ordinances. Are you ready to do an update? If it's not the right time budgetarily, you might say, "No, we're going to wait until FY '24 kicks off." So really important, and this is something that Tina and I discussed, you can update the code as often as you want and immediately if you would like to. But one of the big problems that she and I had to figure out was not everything for the last four or five years was sent to us. So while we had a good collection, what do we have? Maybe 19 or 20 items. She found another half dozen, dozen that she was sending to us that just were never sent over in that employee shuffle. So we didn't want to do an update until we knew we had everything for 2018 and 2019. We wanted to make sure that your record was current. We have an update in progress now. I believe it's going to wrap up in a few weeks, and once we confirm that there's no more outstanding, we'll do a second update, I hope, before the end of this year so we can make sure everything's good going into 2024.
I would just finally like to say, I love this discussion. I actually would have preferred this almost more as a workshop than at our meeting on an agenda, because, I mean, this is something that all councillors, and I'm sure some of the administration would have preferred to sit down and just have it more as a workshop, obviously preferring at the end of our meeting that I'm thinking even new councillors and something should understand. But thank you.
The reason why we were kind of just wanting to introduce this to you now is because the code site hadn't been updated in so long, and because we started to get these updates in progress and, you know, happening, we wanted to at least introduce the code site to you just officially. It's been a while since anybody from General Code's been out here. You know, we're real people, we're around, we're here to help. We want to make sure that you feel comfortable using the site. But if you would like me to come back for a separate workshop, I absolutely can, just please after October.
I just want to clarify things. So if she sends you code, it sits in the new laws section?
Yes.
So it's still there, people can access it?
It is still a part of your official city code. It is still something that your police can enforce. The only thing is that it just hasn't been fully integrated into the book. Just because it's not sitting in the full book doesn't mean that it's not a valid law.
And I think I looked at the new code you pulled down, and there was actually some things going back to 2013, 2014, there was a few.
2006.
Yeah, 2006, hit or misses, so it's not.
Found a few.
Yeah, so it's been.
It's been a minute.
And stuff has been missed, and they're working diligently to try and get. I would rather have it updated, kind of a one-shot, instead of, for now, to get everything, have it sit in the new code until you've got everything, you know you've found all the old stuff, and then it's there.
So what we did was we figured we could basically do two updates. The first update is getting the oldest stuff done, and then once we knew that the newest stuff, 2023, 22, and I think some were 21, once we knew we had that, then we could go through and get it done. It's taken a little bit more time, but there was a lot of research that Tina had to go through. You hired an awesome clerk, though, because we talk regularly, we've been getting this thing up to date. It's just, there was a little bit of a drop-in conversation between General Code and North Adams, but there's no reason why we can't fix that, and I think we were working on it.
Thank you. Councillor Shade, councillor Harpen.
Yes, through the chair first, thank you so much for coming to talk to us about the code. I've had a lot of conversations with Tina recently about code and ordinance and the different things there. In researching some of the code and going through some of it, I do notice that some of our sections that reference certain parts of mass general law are out of date or the mass general law has changed. So how does 360 recommend making those changes and adjusting things so that it's referencing the correct things in mass general law?
So you have, I think, the oldest code that I've seen in Massachusetts. If you go down to the bottom of your code, you're going to see a code comparative table. So generally, we build a disposition list, not distribution, disposition list. So any new code, basically any code that's 2010 newer, the disposition list would be a running record of everything that's been adopted since your last codification or recodification. Looking at this code, I believe we took this over at some point in 70s or 80s, did it mostly on paper and books, and then eventually brought you an online code. Your code is one that I would recommend that the city consider recodifying. Now, in an initial codification project, what we do is we take every single piece of outstanding legislation you've ever passed, we compile it, we organize it, we analyze it, and we make sure that it's legal, in line with mass general laws, state statutes, that it's free from conflicts within itself. But the biggest part of that is everything that is relevant to one another goes in its correct chapter. So if you had 10 dog ordinances and 10 chicken ordinances, you're going to get one very nice animals chapter. You'll see where it's broken out, dogs and chickens and whatever else. Over time, cities will change how they adopt laws. They might have a different naming scheme that happens, or a reference style that changes. So what we say is every 15 to 20 years or after 40 supplements, recodify your code. So we're not going to necessarily rebuild every single chapter and section, but we are going to go through, we're going to look at the editorial concerns, the legal concerns, and then if there are some ordinances that are out of place, we're going to put them in the correct chapter and straighten the thing all back out again. It's not something that every community needs to do, because quite frankly, some communities just don't pass any laws. They codify once, and they're good for 50 years. It's, you know, towns of 2,000 people, they're going to adopt, what, one by law every other year? It's very easy. But your city is incredibly active, which there's nothing wrong with that, and I love to see it. It just means that your code has started to fall out of alignment probably 20 years ago. So at some point, what I would recommend is we should probably have a code workshop and talk about how we can get your code up to date, or at the very least, provide you a roadmap of what we think might be helpful. Makes sense?
Councillor Harpen.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for coming. I think the presentation was great, very knowledgeable, and not only for councillors, but also for the public. I think I brought this up in a prior meeting, that I think it's really important that the public in general, meaning the residents of the city, the businesses, people who are interested in coming here, feel comfortable to go to our site in making sure that our laws and ordinances are up to date, how to filter through it, and I think this gives a basic understanding of that, so thank you very much. And I also want to thank Clerk Linazio for working so diligently on this. This was a lot of work. I know she went through a lot of past ordinances and making sure that they were online. If they weren't online, they are now in that new bucket, which will be filtered through, hopefully before 2024, right?
Crossed.
So great news, we're on the right track, and for 2024, it looks like the community will be able to confidently look up ordinances and filter through things and be able to use our online services for knowledge in ordinances of the city of North Adams. That's great. Thank you.
I do want to show you one last thing. Sorry, I don't want to interrupt. On the black menu bar, there's a little wrench button that says admin. And if you click admin, you can go over to dashboard. In this dashboard, you can break down when your code is most popular by hour, looks like 3 o'clock, 2 o'clock, the days of the week that your code is most often viewed, and the month that it's busy. But you can also see, your code has had 13,000 views over 12 months. At least 1,800 of those are from unique individuals. And you can also go down and look to see the most popular search terms over the last 30 days or the last 12 months. Marijuana, cannabis, 16 and 10 results respectively. And then over 12 months, commercial-scale, ground-mounted solar permit, this is a mouthful, 161 times that that was looked up. So this gives you a really great snapshot, where if you're actively updating your code, adding public documents, adding notes, et cetera, and your community trusts this to be the sole resource for your legislative info, you're going to see that those metrics change over time, and you're going to see how folks are interacting with your community. So, but it's a really great piece of information where you can just get a snapshot of how things look as of today. And if you look at it tomorrow, it's how things look tomorrow over the last 12 months.
That's a lot of searches, I would add, 13,000 in a year. For a small community, I think that's, people are looking at it already, so that's great.
Darn tootin'.
Councillor Sapienza.
Yes, okay. Yes, I look forward to seeing some type of seminar on this, especially after we get a group of new councillors. We'll have at least three new councillors on the board by November 7th. And yes, I think this would be very helpful to ourselves, existing councillors, those who are going to be carrying on, and those who are going to be joining us or have you. And I look forward to that, and I'm glad that we finally tackled this issue, and I want to commend our city clerk on getting all this together. It's been a long time needed, and it's good, especially since I've been involved in updating a particular ordinance, it's very helpful to have the most current information when you're making edits and changes, things like that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councillor Shade.
Yes, again, I really want to thank you for taking the time to come out here. This is extremely important, and to reiterate what councillor Sapienza just said, it is so important to us to have the most accurate codes and ordinances in front of us when we're trying to make changes or debating making changes to them. Having an accurate one certainly makes that much more difficult. With the recodification, that process, how long would that take if we were to say we want to move forward with a recodification to get everything along? I mean, obviously, ours is really old, and as you said, is extremely out of date. We definitely should and need to do that. How long would that take to go through that process?
Well, first, I want to get to your proposal and the scope of work. That probably takes about two weeks, and I'd want you guys to at least have a few months to consider it and go over what the process looks like. In general, most recodification projects, if the city works diligently with our code editors, can be done 18 months, sometimes 24 months, if you have a lot of egregious things that need to be addressed. Every community's different for what their actual legislation's going to look like. You have 1,214 pages, just as it exists now, not including whatever else you might add to it. So your project would definitely be very large compared to most Massachusetts communities. I think the average code that we have in Massachusetts is about 400. So when I see you guys are busy and legislativeally active, it shows. So I'd say 18 months. There's a little bit of wiggle room between that, but the editors that we have in Massachusetts have been working in mass for 10 years. We got three of them. They're wonderful women, so.
Councillor Sapienza.
Yes, real quick, clarify, codification. I noticed that the outline is like, there's a lot of subsections. Would that be just redoing the outline, so to speak, on how the different items are numbered? Is that what recodification is?
Okay, so when we say codify, we mean to introduce a consistent style and format for all legislation that has, you know, had been adopted or is being put in the code. This, because it's a recodification, you already have 99% of that structure because we've been adding to your code. What we would look at is, because your code is so old, is there a way that we can modernize its look and feel? Are there some chapters that actually need to be broken up to better explain information that it's? actually need to be broken up to better explain information that has been added in over the last 40 years? Are there some chapters that don't need to be individual, that would look better as sections or subsections under large headers? And then within that, we'd go through, look at the editorial, grammatical, and legal, that whole process, 18 months. That process as well is very collaborative. So the first thing that we would do is we'd take a snapshot of the current code, and we'd go through and say, hey, this is what we're working with, this is what we think that we're going to recommend for an updated structure, if we were looking at the structure. We'd kick that back, and the city would say, yeah, you know what, we like that, but maybe rearrange this, and hey, we also had concerns about XYZ chapters. Can you focus on those as you go through and do your analysis? Yes, great, you pass it back over to us, then we do the analysis work. That's going to take us at minimum six months to go through. Then we're going to kick that back over to you. We're probably going to give you four, five, 600 questions that we're going to say, hey, this is out of line, this is conflicting, this needs to be addressed. And at that point, we would say, and generally, it's easier to have like a subcommittee do this type of work, we'd say, get your mayor's office, get your city planner, get your department heads who are subject matter experts, get their opinions. So if we're saying that we recommend XYZ updates for your zoning chapter because the state has changed its standards, your city planner might say, yes, this has been a huge problem, and this is how I'd like that language to read.
So basically, it's a cleanup and a reorganization.
Big cleanup.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you again for coming in, for giving us such detail and an explanation. For those at home, those on, wherever they're watching, it was kind of a nice crash course in research for those who might not be familiar with it. It's also nice to know that you can look at other cities and towns. I mean, we know that, but not everybody else knows that. So thank you so much for taking the time for coming in and doing this, and, you know, maybe we'll think about another workshop or something.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Thank you.
Awesome. I'm going to unplug. Thank you.
Ready to move on. I'm going to talk while you get done. Council Paper 12,003,09, Mayor's Communication Number 89, requesting time to present a proclamation in support of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Without objection, I will file the communication. And Mayor, have at it.
I will read quickly. This is for the month of October. We'd like to declare October 9, 2023, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas the city of North Adams recognizes that the indigenous peoples of the lands that would later become known as Americans are native to these lands. And whereas the city of North Adams recognizes values and celebrates that many contributions made to our community are commonwealth in our country by indigenous people now and throughout history. And whereas the city wishes to honor our local Stockbridge-Muncie community heritage and our national indigenous roots, history, and contributions. And whereas the city of North Adams is one community of many that is open to all, that celebrates and welcomes everyone, that it is dedicated to promoting equity and justice in our city, and that it is committed to the policies and practices that seek to end racism and discrimination. I therefore, be it resolved, that Jennifer A. Maxi, City Mayor of the City of North Adams, do proclaim October 9, 2023, as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thank you. Council Paper 12,003,10, Mayor's Communication Number 90, seeking confirmation of the list of election wardens and inspectors for a term to September 26, 2023, through August 31, 2024. Without objection, I'll file the communication. Mayor?
Basically, this was provided by the city clerk, individuals that she's contacted to appoint and to serve as election wardens and inspectors for the next election. The term runs from September 26, 2023, to August 31, 2024, and the list is presented for your approval.
Without... A motion to approve would be in order?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counsel Sapienza, Counselor Luskowitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah. Are we going to do discussion or not?
Yeah, I guess.
That's okay.
No, no, we can do discussion. Go ahead. What is your question slash comment?
I just had a discussion about the list. The mayor had mentioned that, or you can just put me down for a post, whatever, however you want to do it. But there are some concerns on the list. We do have a requirement every year to do conflict of interest law training, which we forfeit, and that's understandable. But in Massachusetts, former municipal employees are barred from one year after they leave employment from personally appearing before any agency of the municipality in connection with matters that were under their authority. There are names on this list that do not fit this criteria, therefore, they should not serve. You want to approve them, that's fine. I just would hate to see these come up after the election. Family members also are included, but this is very clearly in our annually required ethics training, which is actually on our city website under the city clerk tab. I have happily to oppose. If you want to go on with the vote, that's fine.
I'm not sure if, how that applies. Do we have a reading or anything, or, we got the agenda on Friday, right?
Friday.
Yeah, we got the agenda on Friday.
Well, you got the attachments. The agenda was on Thursday.
Right. Do you have any, do we have any opinion or other clarification on any of these?
No.
When do we have to have this approved by?
I'm looking at the city clerk.
Do we have to have it today? Can it wait till the next meeting?
They can wait until the next one. There are, I know who she's talking about.
Well, I guess if you could bring those concerns to the clerk, or the mayor, and/or the mayor, and we could get a legal opinion from...
Yeah, you're fine to vote. I just was, it's not a problem.
No, I have no problem continuing it. So if we could rescind the motion and get clarification on any of these, that there might be a question on. If you could identify specifically which ones you have, you're concerned about, if you could clarify that to the mayor and the clerk, so that they can get a legal opinion.
I'd be happy to clarify it to the public. I don't have a challenge with that.
Well, we know that. So I would prefer if you let the clerk know, and the mayor know, and they can get a legal opinion from the solicitor.
Who made the motion?
I think it was Counsel...
Yes, I did, yeah. Rescind the motion to postpone.
And rescind the motion to approve and postpone.
Okay, rescind the motion and make a motion to postpone.
To the next meeting.
To the next meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I'm sorry, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of postponing?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So if anybody has a question on any of these candidates, please bring it to the attention of the mayor and the clerk. The mayor will then get some kind of opinion on it. And next, council paper, Council Paper 12,311, a communication from City Clerk Leonazio, requesting to allow the police chief and city clerk the responsibility to assign police officers to the polling place for Election Day. So, okay, just wanted to make sure. So basically, we just need to vote to allow them to do so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counsel Harpen.
Just a quick question.
Okay.
I think I remember doing this before. Clerk Valiers, I think, might have brought the same issue up, because it's a new law. So is this something we're approving each election cycle, or is this something we're just approving and it will happen continuously? It won't come back to the city council? Is this, is this going to, is this just for this election?
So you're asking me?
Yes.
Okay, so, it is, sorry. So, it is my understanding that whenever we're setting up an election, this has to come forward to the council, so that the council's given approval to be able to work with the chief and have the chief and I be able to do this.
Okay, so it'll, it'll come back next, the election cycle, each elec...
Each time.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Just like the election workers. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We did that paper. Council Paper 12,012,313, a communication from Counsel Sapienza, requesting to amend Council Rule Number 7, Order of Business. Yeah, I know. Is it an actual order, or is it a council rule? Okay, without objection, I'll file the communication. Counsel Sapienza?
Yes, okay. What I would like to do is add the administration of oath between the Pledge of Allegiance and the reading of approval of minutes. The reason I am doing this is because we have a lot of visitors that come in just for that particular part of the meeting, and it seems like it's, we don't need to have people there that don't need to be there during other segments of the meeting. Our last meeting, we had reading and approval of the minutes. We had, I believe, a public hearing at that time, and we had a lot of audience members that were just here for the administration of oath. And I feel that by adding this section in, it allows that to happen, and at the end, a short recess. And then after that, if anybody wants to stay, they're certainly welcome. But if they would like to leave, that would be also an option too, and then we could continue on through the rest of our meeting.
Well, the other thing I would suggest is that you actually refer it to general government, since generally, when we change the rules of order, when we change the city council rules, it goes to general government. But, so, you have a motion, without objection, we filed the communication. So Counselor, we'll move on to the order, and then Counsel Sapienza and Counselor Luskowitz can make their comments. So...
So what's the motion on the floor right now?
The motion on the floor was without objection, we filed the communication, and now we have an actual order. They're two separate things. So approval of Council Paper 12,314, I'm sorry, they stuck together. Council Paper 12,313, and I don't think it's an order, but an amendment to the Council Rule 7, Order of Business, a motion would be in order to...
It'll make a motion to refer to general government with the return date of the first meeting in November.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Shade.
Yes, I think this could probably be corrected in general government, but the administration of oath is usually connected to an order, which is part of new business, or it's connected to a communication from the mayor, which is part of new business. So I think it just needs to be written a bit differently to cover those items, because those items would be, need to be moved up. But I'm not sure that they should be moved up before business actually starts on the agenda. So it's something that can be talked about during general government, but I think that needs to be clarified a little more as well. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Luskowitz.
I was going to make the same suggestion about it going to general government. I mean, is it, we never, we never hold back the swearing-ins. We always, the council president does ask for our opinion that we can move that item up to the beginning of the agenda, but it's to my understanding that...
You need to speak into that.
But it's to my understanding that the public hearings pretty much come first before the agenda as well, and the approval of the minutes.
And I do, I, we're going to send it to general government.
Yes.
Personally, I like, I like the idea of leaving the discretion there. And I understand we had, what, six swearings in, three of each or two of each. But they're also not the official swearing-in, they're the ceremonial swearing, and they've already been sworn in. So I understand people coming, and I know last time, we had a real problem with people not being able, who were here on other agenda items, not being in the room during the hearing of visitors. So these are issues, but I do think that's why you need to send it to general government. So, any other discussion? All in favor of sending it to general government?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Oh, well.
Motion carries. Council Paper 12,314, a petition from National Grid to set a public hearing for the installation of a new poll, a replacement of another poll on Montana Street. Without objection, I will set the public hearing for 7:00 on October 10. Set the next meeting. Thank you.
Can I have a comment?
Excuse me?
Can I, can we talk about that, or...
About setting the public hearing?
Yeah.
You don't want to set the, usually...
No, I just have a comment. I...
Okay, I guess, yeah, we, I mean, it was, go ahead.
Through the chair to the mayor. There's been a lot of discussion about the polls in the last few months from constituents, and I was wondering if you could possibly have the commissioner here to answer any questions regarding that. And in the public hearing, could you please have the commissioner here? That would be helpful.
Happy to have him. And we are working on process around that poll.
Okay, I appreciate it.
I also want to clarify, the public hearing is for the applicant to come and for the public to make comments, whether they're in a butter or whatever. And then the next, then we close the public hearing, and then we're supposed to have an agenda item to vote on whether or not we place it. So I guess we would be more up to have them here to speak to us during our section of it, not on the public hearing. That's the public hearing purposes to hear.
Wherever, wherever he can speak, I would appreciate that he would be here.
Thank you. So, we, without objection, we filed that. Let's move on. Approval of taxi license, an application submitted by Indica Blackman to be granted a license to drive a taxi cab for OTT taxi.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of taxi license, an application submitted by Barbara Levine to be granted a license to drive a taxi cab for OTT taxi.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Open forum, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. Thank you. Yeah, speak into the mic, and, yeah, you can, yeah, I don't know if you can get up there.
Andrew Fitch, 20 East Quincy Street. I'm leaving this meeting feeling a little bit nervous about what happened earlier in this meeting, the conversation with tourists. It just seemed to me that they're one of our major employers, one of our major destinations. You know, they're kind of a tourist destination in themselves. People come here just to stay at their hotel. They seem rather concerned that they're not going to be able to move forward. And Mayor Maxi, I completely trust your judgment totally. But I did find myself wondering if there is some creative solution out there that we're not thinking of that can satisfy them. Is there some sort of expedited fee? Do I have to go and pick up or capture the inspector and bring them here to inspect? There's got to be something. So I just wanted to put that out there. And thank you too for working with them on that. Good luck.
Andrew, did you give your name and address for the record?
I believe I did.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, up to the mic. I'm looking at the agenda here.
Robert Cardamino, 173, Quincy Street. I'd like to commend Counsel Sapienza for installing them speakers. It's much better. And I would like to remind the council, please speak into the mic. You stand back here, I cannot hear. Okay? And it was going along. And if you're going to talk, don't talk away from the mic. Talk into it, please. And Counsel Harpen, National Grid is supposed to notify the Commissioner of Public Services when they're going to put a poll in, where, and then Timmy Lescavo will come and inspect it. You know, that is part of the ordinance, and he's going to, supposed to get paid and everything else. else. And I read that article to the whole council, and they're still not in compliance. And this council passed the last time, and they put up a poll, and Mr. LaScavo never knew about it. So if you're going to violate the ordinance, or if you're going to enforce them, enforce them for everybody, not just the taxis, for National Grid, and that applies to the gas company also. When they dig a hole, they're supposed to put an iron fence around it. Read it, and you'll get an idea of what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead. We've got a mic right there.
Robert Smith. I live at 163 North Street. I wanted to thank Counselor Sapienza for improving the idea that we can hear all the counselors in this room. It's very essential that we hear them. I also want to thank all you counselors for your professionalism tonight. And I'm really impressed with tonight's meeting. Thank you very much.
You're kind of in the middle, six and one half dozen a other, whichever's easiest.
I just want to, I'm Virginia Reilly. I live at 36 Holden Street. I wanted to second what Andrew said. Through that conversation, I just really felt there is a middle ground. There is a potential for compromise. And if the parties could come together and be creative, I do think we could get to the November application, which, from the viewpoint of the city, its finances and funding opportunities, there's too many politics going on right now around the budget, the election. Don't let anything pass you by.
Mayor's Updates.
Sure.
As my voice is going out here, I do also want to thank Counselor Sapienza. I can hear so much better over here, but I do think over in the side of the room, we need a speaker. Because when you sit out there, you can hear everyone very well. Just a thought. I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow, I'm sorry, Friday is our children's parade at 5:30. On Saturday, we have a children's fair at Joe Wolf Field. And on Sunday is our famous parade stepping off at 1 o'clock. So I look forward to seeing everyone there.
Liaison, committee reports in minutes. Liaison updates, counselors' concerns. I'm just going to add in quickly, in case you didn't see the email. If you're planning on marching with the city council on Sunday, please let me know. Also, I will try and get, I should have details, I think, tomorrow night, on what time to show up and which directions. And I'm sure there's going to be multiple articles in the newspaper and on iBrokers telling us which roads are shut down when. So just be cognizant of it. I hope you can join us. If you know someone, two people who would like to hold the city council banner, that would be great. Have them contact me. Or Counselor Sapienza or somebody who can help us facilitate that. And I hope to see everybody. It's looking like it's not going to be too bad of a day. And so hopefully, we'll have a great parade. Anything else? A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.